All right. Green lights and everything. All right, welcome to the Lewisville City Council Workshop Agenda. We do have a quorum and it is 6:15 PM. First up on the workshop agenda, we have our consent and regular agenda items. So we'll go ahead and move into those. Councilmember Troyer, I've got you with invocation. Councilmember Jones, I've got you with the flags. We have a few proclamations to get through. And then, public hearing number one, continued public hearing regarding Lady Tesla Avenue.
Continue.
Yeah, and Mayor, I was gonna say, the recommendation on this, and I think in the EVO explained that we would, staff was still working with a developer on some last-minute tweaks on the site plans and some of the notes on that, and we would like some additional time. I believe the developer's on board with that, too. We'd like to have you guys continue it to the public hearing, November 7th meeting, is that correct?
November 4th.
November 4th, I'm sorry. November 4th.
November 4th?
Uh huh.
So I want to take that opportunity real quick to thank Richard for your hard work on this, 'cause I know this is not very easy. But I think you've come up with at least a concept and plan that looks really good. Thank you for that.
All right, moving on, public hearing number two. Ordinance granting a zone change from single-family residential to old townhomes use one. Any questions on that one? That's the little house back over here.
Seems pretty cut and dry for the area.
Moving to consent agenda. Bid award for requirements, contracts for street sweeping. Item four, economic development agreement between the city and DMR Oak Bend. Fifteen acres near South Uker Lane. Item five, resolution adopting the city's legislative agenda.
Mayor, I wanted to propose a couple of changes to the order.
Okay.
Just to break down the guidelines.
So what we'll do is we'll pull it from the agenda when we get out there, and then we'll have a conversation about what to change. If that's all right with you, Andrew.
Yeah, that sounds great. Whatever the process is, then have you follow the process.
Awesome. Item H, city council and staff reports. Do we have a closed session, James?
Yes.
We do have closed session. And with that, if there are no further items to discuss, we'll go ahead and move to the short-term rental update. Chris McGinn is going to give us the presentation.
I've been so looking forward to this. Good night.
Mayor and council, just wanted to take a little bit of time this evening to go over how things have been going with the ordinance, the short-term rental ordinance and the permit requirements that went into effect July 8. Just to provide you a little bit of history of where we've been and where we're going. January 2020, we held a workshop to discuss short-term rentals, and council gave us the direction to continue to monitor short-term rentals. At that point in time, there were just over 50 short-term rentals that we were able to identify addresses for. Moving on to September 2023, we had staff at Dakota work really hard on getting survey information together from different cities to look at what cities we're doing to, to look at ordinances or requirements on short-term rentals, how other cities were handling this. At that point, council gave direction to draft an ordinance. After that, we had worked on reaching out to owners and residents that wanted to voice their opinion at public input meetings hearings that we held, two of those, and really worked with some of the platforms to reach out to the owners so that we could get input from both sides of the issue, to get feedback from that. At that point, city manager Fairpile had presented some potential regulations and proposed draft of the ordinance, and council approved that ordinance January 2024. Shortly thereafter, council adopted the interim prohibition for a period of one year. That interim prohibition lasted, basically began March 4th of 2024. The ordinance was approved January 2024, but the ordinance went into effect July 2024, and that was to give us some time to look at utilizing host compliance, Granicus, to provide a way of providing a license process in order to do this, and then also take in payment for hotel occupancy taxes. Just taking a look at the numbers, one thing I wanted to point out on this slide is that July 2023 numbers, originally that was presented to council with 11 less from that 104. Our new ordinance accounted for any short-term rentals that were, including the single room that was for rent. So by our definition, those were now included as a definition of short-term rentals. So that added a little bit to our numbers at 104. Prior to the ordinance going into effect in July, we took a look at those short-term rentals that we had a positive identification for, for address, and that number was 121. And as you can see, currently, October 2024, we have 91 short-term rentals. So as these requirements for the ordinance have gone into effect, and we've reached out to owners, letting them know about the process, those have dropped off to currently 91. So looking at that, since the ordinance has gone into effect till now, we've had a 25% decrease in short-term rentals. That can mean one of two things. One is they've decided to continue to advertise, but they are advertising longer than 30-day stays, or they're just deciding not to have a short-term rental at all, and are not advertising.
So Chris, is that how we're identifying? We're just looking at the advertisement or the lack of, and saying this one is no longer active?
Correct. So the software that we use looks at about 75 different hosting platforms that they could possibly list on, and pulls that information. So that's how we're getting a general idea of what's happening.
So some of them turn into midterm to long-term?
Correct. Yeah, I have some of those numbers, of those here a little bit later. So what all has changed since the ordinance took effect, and we kind of ran these numbers last week, and so they've gotten a little bit better. But 91% of short-term rentals that have been identified either have a permit or an application in process. So that's 86% compliance rating. So 62 of those permit issued, 16 that are actually going through the application process. So we do have a handful, a dozen or so, that are in non-compliance. And we'll talk a little bit more about how we're handling that. Originally, looking at the 121, we're 89% or 90% in compliance, and 30 of those properties stopped advertising, as I've mentioned. And I think that 20 had removed their listing, and 10 have turned into long-term rentals from that point.
Chris, I have a quick question. So there's 121 as of when we started looking, now starting to last look at this stuff? Did any, did you identify any new ones that have popped up that maybe weren't aware of the ordinances, or are you just looking at the 121 as your benchmark?
So basically, anything that was advertising prior to March 4th, anybody that was actively advertising is what we were looking at.
Do you have any idea if any new ones have popped up, or are you just not aware of the ordinances?
So we did, and I'll talk about how we handled those. There were 17 that had come up during the interim prohibition.
A whole bunch of them.
Okay. You know, we had discussed host compliance and being ready to go with that. Unfortunately, I don't believe it's on staff's side of things that we're not able to be at 100% with host compliance, but we have worked out an intermediate process to handle these applications and process and track everything. And we're also continuing to collect hotel occupancy taxes for those short-term rentals that are permitted with us.
Can I pause right there? I just wanted to also do kudos to IT staff on that. So really with host compliance, the intent was to always move, it should be out-of-the-box type of thing, we could just move like that, this is what they do. They have so many clients now because every single city is dealing with this, there's a huge backlog, and so we looked at it, and we're like, I don't think this is going to be done in time, and so IT stood up their own system.
I do want to give kudos to Ms. Buchanan. She's a lot of the heavy lifting, she's worked in concert with her staff, but again, there should be a lot of praise given her way.
Yeah, so that, I mean--
To all of you.
We didn't really see that coming initially, but digging in and working with them to get an intermediate process set up, we've been able to track these without any issue. So that's been, that's been great. This map's about a week outdated, but really what you're seeing here is that we have a portion of these that are permitted, we have some that are in progress, meaning in-progress can mean a lot of different things, that they've submitted for an application, they've paid for that permit fee, they might be scheduling a third-party inspection to have that inspection done on the property, making sure that their advertised number meets what we're seeing as far as International Property Maintenance Code and Bedroom Occupancy. We're making sure all that matches up. There also may be some violations that they need to take care of before an actual permit is issued. And then, we have a handful of locations that are not permitted, and I'll talk about how we're handling those.
Can you go back real quick?
Sure.
Those two dots by Highway 121, up at the top right there, are those in Castle Hills? Look like they're in Castle Hills.
These here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe--
Looks like it.
They are. We'll have to check and see how--
I can look myself, I'll just go out and look at the flag. Those are like, Greenhaven Townhomes.
I believe they are the Townhomes.
Okay.
So if they were in Castle Hills, the CHME wouldn't allow those.
If they do allow them, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So non-compliance of short-term rentals, how are we handling that? Well, staff has worked really hard to identify through water billing, appraisal district, deeds, to make sure that we're getting certified notices to the owners of the property, so they know that, one, there's the requirement, and that they need to go through the process. So code enforcement has sent out 81st notices, 37 second notices of violation, and then out there are 27 warnings and citations. And so that's how we're handling the non-compliance right now, and I believe there's nine or 10 citations currently pending. But those violation notices could be sent to a short-term rental for a variety of reasons. Those could be without a permit, applicants that are just not responsive, or operating in violation of the interim prohibition. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we handle the short-term rentals that have come up between when the interim prohibition started on March 4th, 2024. For short-term rentals that don't follow city code, we do have the current ordinance in place that sets up for the revocation of their license if the owner receives two citations for anything that relates to city code. And so we're currently working with, not only code, but IT's helping us with PD data so that we're able to see what's going on on the other side, to see what sort of citations may have been issued, so that we can track that and identify that if we need to go through the revocation process. So for short-term rentals that showed up during the interim prohibition, which will go until March 3rd of 2025, there were 17 properties that came up during that time. And working with legal, took a look at these, those properties were basically approved as non-conforming use. There was one there that provided evidence that they were, that they began operating prior to March 4th. So they had purchased the home as a short-term rental, they hadn't advertised yet, but they had the expectations of that property as being a short-term rental. So some of those that did come up were allowed to get a permit, but 12 of those 17 properties removed their listings or switched to a long-term rental.
Chris, what does it mean, the properties were approved as non-conforming use? What does that mean?
Meaning that they were able to provide us information to show that they had the expectations of this property being a short-term rental. Prior to, you know, may or not have actually had anyone renting it after March 4th, but prior to that, they had those expectations of that property utilized for that.
How does that differ from the one?
I think this one had to do with advertising.
Yeah, so host compliance, this was a property that was kind of like on the cusp. So host compliance put it at a later date when it began advertising, like a couple days after March 4th, but they were able to provide a conversation and confirmation of rental and it being rented prior to March 4th.
We worked through that one with that. What I will say is, you know, this is a new process, a slightly complicated process in some ways, and so, you know, we really wanted to make sure that we had things for residents, they know where to go to submit a complaint. Also, for the owners of short-term rentals that were interested in, you know, going through the process, getting a license, you know, on our website, we have links to, you know, how to submit a concern. For those owners of STRs, we have application checklist, inspection checklist, templates on, you know, informational brochures that are required by ordinance to post. And so we really try to make this easy for the owners, if they're interested in going through the process. Copies of the ordinances are there, information on, from finance, on hotel occupancy taxes, and working with them to try to figure out what types of information that we should put on there. As far as steps on recording short-term rental concerns, we recently set up, and we will be promoting this 24/7 short-term rental hotline. This is basically part of our agreement with host compliance, with our software, and it's a service that they provide, it's 24 hours, they get a live operator. What I like about this is that they actually work with the owner of the property, and if there's a concern, they reach out to the owner and try to resolve things through that process. So we pushed all that information of everybody that we had a permit for, and those that are in process, and they have that information. I would add that, you know, if residents have any concerns about anything outside that might be an emergency or legal activity, that they would call the non-emergency line for those types of things, emergency, for an emergency 911, of course. But this platform, actually, they work directly with the owner. And it could be, these are some examples on the side here of what types of issues that might be.
I have a question. Is there, is it possible to search? So is there a search that we can do to find a specific property, or if there's a property in a neighborhood, or?
Right now, we have an internal map, right, of all short-term rentals that are permitted.
Right, if we're talking about, are we sharing where the locations of the short-term rental permits are? No, we don't have that to the public yet. No.
That concerns me. It concerns me for safety reasons, for thieves.
It concerns you to post it online.
To have it public, to be posted online.
What most cities are doing is they'll provide a PDF of those, you know, it's public information of what locations are permitted, so we truly do that, I would think, but yeah, we can take a look at that. Looking at the data, this is our best attempt to try to collect data from two areas of the police department, and then also a rock-solid, the citizen response center. And, you know, there was a lot of different types of information that was coming in, a lot of residents were voicing what they don't like about a short-term rental, so we really had, or what they do like about a short-term rental, but we really had to comb through the data to make sure that we were trying to identify concerns from residents on both sides. And what we found was that we had 103 concerns from residents, and that represented 41 different addresses. And of those 41 different addresses, 20 at least had a violation. And what I mean by violation is that there was some sort of action that was needed by the police department or from code enforcement, whether that was talking to the owner and they complied, or, you know, a pool gate was open and we had to send a notice to the owner and they closed it, or, you know, PD went out on-site and there was further action required on that end. And so really, what you're looking at is, you know, of these 103 concerns, about 30% of those resulted in some sort of violation. And really, on the code enforcement side, what we noticed was after July 8th, that we were identifying some that didn't have a current short-term rental permit. So a lot of those numbers for code enforcement went up after the ordinance went into effect because we had that ordinance to assist with the enforcement of the permit issuance. And really, on this slide, trying to look at this, anything that's capitalized would be a code enforcement item, anything that's capitalized would be some sort of violation related to police department.
Chris, how difficult was it? Because you said you get this from, it leads to difficult, because to pull all this together.
This was probably the most difficult thing, that working with business analyst at Dakota, reaching out to PD, really trying to comb the data.
Because these are stored in two completely different systems, right?
Yeah, so, you know, I think what was most interesting is, you know, there might be a concern, but, you know, a violation that the city's able to enforce, we were really looking at 30% on both sides of police department and code when it came through is like, we're actually able to do something based on city code.
I would say traditionally, I get a lot of confusion from residents between, is this a code or is this a PD? And it just, it creates some tension, so I can understand how it might be difficult to gather the data, because the workflow and how residents perceive some of this is definitely challenging at times.
I think our goal is to really make the process, you know, for a resident, they just want their concern heard, they want to know who to talk to and not--
And not be bounced back and forth, yeah.
So, you know, there's some things that we'll talk about a little bit later on areas where we can increase our efficiencies in those areas.
Chris, before you move on from that, so 120, 103 related concerns, is there any feel for, that was done by three individuals or 103 people? I'm just trying to figure out if it's, you know, one person out there.
That's a good question. I do know that we did have some of the concerns coming from single individuals, but I don't think we pulled that data on, like, who specifically it was, if it was coming from the same person.
Partially answer that question. So there are some people who have, like, for instance, for our Lewisville, they have an account, and so their name is associated with it, but there are a lot of entries that people are just putting it in really quick, and they select anonymous. So I could give you numbers, but it would be, like, it would be really inaccurate. But I could give you the sense of it, but it would take me--
I'm just mildly curious to see if we had one person, that this is their job now? Or if we had 103 people that were individually noticing things?
I know that we probably have one person, that that's their job.
There are probably a few who report concerns most consistently.
Sure. And so how are we safeguarding the STR owner from that malicious conduct?
We're handling those concerns just like we would any other concerns, and we have to validate if there's a violation that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Hotel occupancy taxes, I think Dave was gonna talk a little bit about hotel occupancy taxes.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor and council, as you've probably heard by now, Chris and his team has had the heavy lift for this. Putting together a program from scratch was quite extensive. For the collections and the compliance, we're doing a lot of modeling of what we're already doing with the hotel occupancy tax. So we didn't have to do a lot of creative thinking to get to that. So, you know, we just think we're worried about tracking and collections on the collection side, and then on the backend, compliance, make sure that those short-term rentals are submitting their reports on a monthly basis. And then, on the backend of that, if they're not, what do we have as far as our, the hammer, so to speak, to ensure compliance? So just gonna provide a snapshot of collections of what we're seeing to date. Currently, all the process is being done manually, it's tracked on a spreadsheet, that's how we've done it in the past. We had between 25 and 30 hotels operating at one time, so that was easily manageable, right, to track those on a monthly basis. We would have staff from our customer service area that would follow up on those that were not remitting, and it was a fairly easy process. We knew that adding 100 short-term rentals to it, we weren't going to be able to do that manually. So we're utilizing host compliance for a lot of the collections, not only for the short-term rentals, but also for the hotels that we have. And then on the backend for client, compliance, we're able to utilize their reporting to ensure, to cross-check, I guess, for those that are registered permits, for those that are submitting their payments. So again, we're gonna be moving from a manual process to a more electronic process, as soon as we're up with host compliance fully. But right now, I think we have a very manageable process that IT has put together and working with inspectional services on this. We start collecting from the short-term rentals in August, and that's for reporting activity in June and July. In September, most recently, we've collected from 15 newly-registered short-term rentals. That's in addition to the five short-term rentals that had already been remitting taxes on a monthly basis prior to this. So we actually had five short-term rentals that were complying under our hotel occupancy tax before we put anything into place for short-term rentals. So what does that mean? From those 20 that were collected from September, each of the short-term rentals were averaging Again, this revenue does not take into account the recently-permitted short-term rentals. We had about 33 that were approved in September, October timeframe that aren't reporting until October, November. So we're gonna expect that number to be going up as months go on, so we're gonna be able to report on that. So we're going to be able to report on that and track that as we start seeing those. In addition to the short-term rentals, we're tracking collections for 27 hotels. And again, we're going to utilize hotel or host compliance to track those remittances. And what's neat about that is, right now, again, not only is the reporting and tracking manual, but we're also taking checks and they're bringing them in online, they're filling out a form to send them in. So we're going to develop an electronic process that they'll be able to submit their monthly reports and remit their payments online. So that's going to be a work in progress, process with host compliance.
I just had a quick comment. I'm really interested to see, because this 421 a month, that's actually more than I was expecting for that to be. But you said that's for the months of June and July. I'm curious to see, as we continue to collect this data, how, you know, are we going to have seasonal trends where we have it go up in the summer and then kind of come back down? I know we won't know that for a while, but I'm really curious to see how all of that kind of works out, the data behind it.
Dave, does any of this data reflect remittances from the platforms themselves? So does Airbnb or any of these, any of the platforms actually pay us?
No, they go straight to the state.
So.
No, this is just actually the collecting internal. And to your point, Chris, we have history for the hotels. We know that there's seasonal fluctuations, so I imagine we'll have this too, and we'll be able to report through the host compliance module that information. And I'm sure after a year, we can communicate that back to council. Regarding compliance, we're going to work again as a team with Neighborhood Inspection Services to ensure that those that have been permitted are reporting on a regular basis. They're even required to report zero remittance reports. So even if they had no activity for the month, just so that we can track their activity on a monthly basis, we wouldn't be able to do that by those remittances. Revolving a short-term or a short-term rental checklist to make sure that on a monthly basis, there are reports, and if there's not reports, then what's the steps to take to follow up with that? We currently have staff and a customer service team that does this, and they're well-versed on the hotel occupancy side. So with the short-term rentals, we're just going to be able to utilize those same steps to manage the short-term rentals.
If they have zeros, are they supplying their state account, their state tax account number with y'all so you can cross-reference the fact that they say they have zero, but actually X number has been turned in from the state between this and this, so it's not zero?
So there's a couple of things. One, I'll talk a little bit later about the audit procedure, we're going to select a handful that we're going to audit, and we can ask for all the documentation. So their tax forms that they submit to the state, we'll be able to get those. Any records that they have internally, we have already in our code the ability to collect that documentation to perform an audit, and there's consequences if they don't provide that. So we have that ability to do that. Also, there's a real neat thing, I think that host compliance, Doug and Mike will speak to it better, but if we get a zero remittance from a short-term rental and then host compliance checks that they have two reviews for recent stays, they're able to come back to us and say, well, maybe you might want to amend your file. So there's going to be ways that we're going to be able to follow up on those kind of things. And I think this is all new, so we're going to probably develop these and refine these processes over time.
Can we get the information from like the Airbnb? We may not, will they even send that to us if we request that as a city to see what remittances they had for?
Because that's their personal, that's like, mine would be my account number. But you can get something from the state on that.
Right, because they're remitting the hotel occupancy tax to the state.
To the state.
So that'll be our, because if they're fraudulently filing claims with the state, they've got bigger problems than dealing with us. So we're going to utilize them, those reports, as our basis for the audit.
Yeah, I just thought Airbnb had something that they were talking, they're supposed to be helping to keep track of that stuff, but I guess that's not right.
No, not me.
So we're using host compliance as that support for that. Again, the monthly reporting that we're going to be able to get from host compliance, we're going to be able to flag those accounts that haven't either submitted a report or submitted a zero report, and we'll be able to follow up on those for additional calls. Like I said earlier, we have an audit process already with the hotels. We audit six to eight on an annual basis, based on when they last were audited, and it's for a certain period of time. And then we ask them to provide all the documentation and support, their tax remittances, and we will review those on an annual basis. And then if there's something that doesn't seem right, we can ask for follow-up on that.
I have a quick question. Do we have something in place where, let's say somebody gets a permit to operate for a year, and then a few months later, they sell the house? Is there a form that they can fill out with the city that says, hey, we've sold the house, we're not, so they don't have to, they're not required to keep sending in reports for nine months, you know, throughout the rest of that 12-month period where they can say, hey, this is our final one, we're done?
Yeah, I think we're asking them to contact us if there's any changes to the permit or their license or their status, basically. We will know just by running the reporting that they're no longer advertising, and so that could also be a sign that they're no longer, and then, you know, we would check ownership change at that point.
Okay.
And then lastly, regarding compliance, renewals maybe withheld in accordance with city ordinances. So if they're in arrears with the permit, any kind of reporting, remittances, any other arrears with the city, whether it's a utility bill or some others, we would be able to withhold the renewal until those have been satisfied.
We've got about six minutes left. I see about four seconds.
That's all I have about compliance. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it back over to Chris.
So surprises along the way. You know, we've worked directly with Airbnb. We also have contact with VRVO for situations such as the lake and the agreement with the court where no overnighting is allowed on the lake. And so we currently have one posted, and we made that request on Friday to have that removed. But basically, in the case of the first one, they removed that listing immediately. I think for myself, the most surprising thing is that, you know, the ordinance requires the owner to fill out the permit, and there were a lot of short-term rentals that were being rented out by the person that was renting. So they were turning around, they were renting and they were turning around and subleasing, I guess you'd say.
Which may have gone against their lease.
It's like an exception kind of thing, getting my head around this.
We had this going along, going on at a lot of our apartment complexes, and in many cases, the property manager wasn't even aware. Also, in a lot of single-family residential situations where they were renting and the renter was turning around and renting. So a lot of that, that hasn't been good. And then also, when we do the onsite inspections, you know, we're finding, you know, hey, looking at this bedroom, it doesn't have proper egress, or there's no window, that kind of goes along with egress, but the size, that they wouldn't be considered bedrooms. And so, you know, we would identify a certain number by International Property Maintenance Code, and that inspector would send that number to us, and then we would make sure that that advertising reflected what was seen during the inspection. So we had several of those. Some of those were even listed as, you know, 16-plus. And so like, what does that mean? If 25 people, you know, is that acceptable if they're renting a short-term rental? So we made sure that those advertisements matched what was seen during the inspection. So there's a lot of things that we can do better. You know, really talking about streamlining the citation issuance. At this point in time, everybody knows that the ordinance is out there, we've notified all the owners of the requirements, and so really the warning citations, that piece of it will go away and will go straight to first notice, second notice, and citation or non-compliance. And enforcement of no renting while they're actually going through the permit application process or renewal. And so we want to make sure that we get the information out early enough so that they comply early. But if they're not in compliance during the time of the application, we'll definitely take a look at that. Also, working with PD, you know, talking with PD about what the ordinance requirements are, are there some trigger points on their end where, you know, if they call the property manager and they don't return that call within an hour, you know, there's some enforcement that can be done on code enforcement side of things. So there's some education on that side of things, maybe some other areas where we can look at the current ordinance for additional enforcement. And working with a listing company, so once, they're required by the ordinance to list their permit information, and so at this point in time, we can start to look at those that already have a permit to make sure that they're listing their permit information and those that don't are non-compliant. Taking a look at the current ordinance to see maybe there are other ways of enforcement, some discussion for adjustments to that, and then being ready to launch the new portal in 2025 and having everything streamlined on the platform, I think will be less work for staff and not only in Neighborhood Inspection Services, but for finance. Next steps. So we're going to have to have a discussion at some point on the interim prohibition on short-term rentals. It expires in March 2025, so returning to council, I'm guessing, February 2025 with another update and discussion on how things will move forward. Continued permitting and enforcement during the interim prohibition while that's still going on, and we'll begin doing renewals in August 2025 of the permitted locations. Any additional questions?
Mayor, I'd like to take y'all into closed session under Attorney Consultation 551.071.
Right.
Go into closed session.
It's 7:02 PM, and we're going to call this meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. All right. First up tonight is our invocation from Councilmember Bob Troyer.
Please join me in standing and join me in a moment of silent contemplation.
Please join me in the pledges to the American and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Looks like I've got some proclamations to do here. So first up tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. Chris Chastain, our Environmental Preserve and Green Belt Manager, and Eric D'Antonio, our Urban Forester, to come on up, plus anybody else on your team. Come on. How are you, my friend? Good. Good. All right. So we are proclaiming this month Texas Arbor Day, and since Chris and the team over there at our parks and recreation and all the other great folks maintain a lot of our tree canopy, that's why I got him up here. So first of all, the proclamation is by the City Council of the City of Louisville, and whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton, bet you didn't know that, proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and Texas first observed Arbor Day in 1899 under the leadership of the Texas Forestry Service. And whereas for 30 years, Louisville has been recognized as a Tree City USA and desires to continue its tree-planting ways, and whereas Louisville recognizes all across Texas, trees are beautiful and prominent features of our unique and breathtaking landscape, and whereas in partnership with Keep Louisville Beautiful and the Friends of Lila, Louisville recognizes the need to protect our urban forests and tree canopy, and our community is committed to addressing the need by adopting the Louisville 2025 Plan and developing our healthy infrastructure plan. And now therefore, ITJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, November 1st, 2024, as Texas Arbor Day in Louisville, Texas, and urge all Louisville residents to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program, and I urge all residents to plant trees to create a brighter and greener future for the next generation. And this is a great time of year to be planting them. So let's give Chris and his team a hand.
I just want to say thank you for those words, Mr. Mayor, and as well to the rest of our city leadership and council members. We couldn't do the work that we do without your support, and we're just so happy to protect resources as beneficial as trees. We hope to educate the residents of Louisville and all the magical things that they do for us and the health benefits they provide. So we look forward to protecting and growing our tree canopy in the years to come for future generations.
I have some chair volleyballers. Y'all are rowdy. I love it. If you all want to join me up here, I would love to have you up here to partake in this proclamation. Welcome. Thank you for being here. The chameleons, I love it. Is the wristband part of the uniform?
Yes. We have three teams.
I gotcha.
Red.
Red.
Green.
Green.
And gold.
And gold team is the one that won the trophy. Awesome. Oh, awesome. Our greens, here they come. Awesome. How you doing? Welcome, welcome. Glad to have you all here. There is a chair volleyball court that is quite empty and alone right now, I can tell. Welcome. Glad you're all here.
Red team go on the other side.
It's good to have somebody in charge.
It is.
How are you, man? Good to see you, sir. How you been? Good. Nice to see you. Hi, welcome. All right, now I'm just, nobody spike the ball behind me, okay? Did you want to set this, or you're good? You're good? Awesome. Okay, just making sure. So here we go. This, these are our Louisville Thrive Chair Volleyball Champions. The Louisville City Council would like to commend the Louisville Thrive Chair Volleyball Team for demonstrating exceptional skill and determination by competing in a local tournament hosted by Thrive in Louisville on September 26, 2024. The Louisville Thrive Chair Volleyball Team, co-captain by Brenda Taylor and Bill Lynn, triumphed over many formidable opponents on the path to victory, including Alan Carrollton and Frisco. Team members Barbara Arabi, Floyd Crossland, Roberta Danks, Arna Dennis, Paula Johnston, Karen Robertson, and Steve Shomo, pardon me if I messed any of those up, exhibited exceptional teamwork and perseverance throughout the tournament. This accomplishment serves as an inspiration to all residents of Louisville and highlights the importance of determination, collaboration, and community spirit. ITJ Gilmore, Mayor of Louisville, on behalf of the City Council, congratulate the Louisville Thrive Chair Volleyball Team on winning the championship title. Y'all are awesome. You all are awesome. Thank you so much for representing your city, and we're going to need to learn some pointers from y'all. Does anybody want to say anything?
Yes.
Come on, get in here.
Mayor Gilmore, this is the most exciting thing, second to winning a trophy we've ever done. We would like to share with you our motto. You guys ready?
Yes.
Hustle and heart, set us apart! Yes. Our hustle and hard, this team has played together for 10 years, and this is our first trophy.
That's awesome.
We'd like to teach you our cheer. You ready? Ooh, angawa, chameleons got the power. Ooh, angawa, chameleons got the power. Thanks, y'all.
Awesome. Thank you all. I can do that. I can pop in here.
Okay. I'll stand right here. Oh. Yeah, all right. That's how it works. Somebody counts.
Let's go down.
I doubt it. Smile, Robert.
All right. Congratulations. With the whole team. Y'all are, I've been asked if the gold team can be up here right now.
Yeah. We're the team that won it. We won it.
Great job, y'all.
He's got it. He's good. Y'all ready?
Yeah.
On your mark, get set, go. Fantastic. One more.
One more over there. Awesome. Y'all are amazing. Great job. Great job. Appreciate you. Thank you for representing your city.
Thank you so much.
It's awesome. I love it.
Sure.
I'm going to tell you, every proclamation from here on out is just going to be an emotional down for me. I don't know how I'm going to keep that level. And I have two other quick ones. Councilmember Troyer, would you mind joining me here? I believe that every day above ground is a good day. All right. I've got a couple of other brief proclamations. One is for End Polio Now Day. So we'll go ahead and move forward. Councilmember Troyer, of course, brings this every year because of his involvement with Rotary International. I'm also a proud Rotarian. And again, polio has not been, I know we keep thinking about it since about the mid-'80s. It's almost there, but it just keeps scooching by, so we got to keep on it. So whereas polio remains a severe and potentially deadly disease that continues to endanger children in parts of Asia, and whereas vaccination is crucial to prevent polio infection and global education and immunization programs have significantly reduced the incidence of the disease, and whereas Rotarians from the Lewisville Morning Rotary Club and the Lewisville Rotary Club Noon have generously joined in these efforts through monetary contributions and participation in overseas immunization initiatives since the campaign to eradicate polio was launched in 1985, and whereas Lewisville Morning Rotary Club and Lewisville Rotary Club Noon members along with fellow Rotarians worldwide are joining together to raise $50 million per year matched two to one by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and are sponsoring local activities on October 24, 2024 to educate the general public about polio and to raise funds for its eradication. Now therefore ITJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 24, 2024, as End Polio Now Day in Lewisville, Texas, and urge all residents to join the two Lewisville Rotary Clubs and their fellow residents in taking part in this special observance. Bob, you have any words to say?
Just a few. First of all, thank you. I wasn't expecting this.
Oh, so there you go.
But I wanted to do it, and thank you. I would say that if you're interested in learning more about the Rotary effort to end polio, our LewisvilleMorningRotary.org website has a video that has been put out by Rotary International on the effort of Rotary for the past, well, actually, it's been going on for over 50 years, to the effort of Rotary International to try to eradicate polio. So if you have a chance, go to our website and check it out. It's a long video, but it's well worth watching. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Not sure I know how to do that one, so I'm going to leave it be. All right. We have Item D, Presentation, a presentation of our Level III Certified Municipal Court Clerk, Two Municipal Court Employee, Courtney Kinkle. Courtney, Jeremy, and Jennifer, I've got a few of us up here, so I'll let you all. Here we go. I'll take whoever wants to come on up here. I only have a limited number of names on my piece of paper. Sorry. Go right ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and Mayor, Council, and City Administration. I stand before you tonight not only as your Director of Court Services, but I'm also here as the Vice President of the Texas Court Clerks Association. I have here with me Jennifer Bezorgnia, who is the Court Services Director for the City of Irving. She's the newly elected president for the Texas Court Clerks Association as well. Together, we want to express our appreciation for the opportunity to be here tonight, to announce that out of approximately 4,000 court clerks in the state of Texas, a mere 147 have reached the status of Certified Municipal Court Clerk. We are here to honor Courtney Kinkle for achieving her status and becoming the 147th Certified Municipal Court Clerk. Courtney has worked in the Lewisville Municipal Court for 11 years, where I've had the opportunity and privilege to work with her for the past four years. I've watched Courtney work diligently through the requirements to complete the rigorous course of study. With this great accomplishment, we celebrate the fact that Lewisville Municipal Court now has two Level III certified clerks.
Awesome.
This achievement is not merely a testament of her expertise, but also a reflection of the dedication and commitment required to serve our communities with excellence. Achieving certification as a municipal court clerk demands a comprehensive understanding of legal procedures and a profound commitment to upholding the highest standards of professionalism. It's also a testament of the tremendous support and encouragement provided by all of you in your city, fostering a culture of professional development and growth. Beyond personal accomplishment, this achievement benefits all of Lewisville's community. It ensures that our municipal court system operates at the highest level of efficiency and effectiveness, thereby enhancing access to justice and promoting public trust in our judicial systems. The expertise and knowledge gained through certification directly translates into better service delivery, improved procedural accuracy, and enhanced responsiveness to the needs of those we serve. On behalf of the Texas Court Clerks Association, the Texas Municipal Court's Education Center, and Texas State University, I extend our sincerest congratulations to Courtney, Jeremy, and the City of Lewisville. Thank you for the privilege of being here with all of you to present to her the Certified Municipal Court Clerk's certificate and plaque. Congratulations, Courtney. We are so proud of you.
Thank you, guys. I want to thank Judge Holman and Jeremy for encouraging me, and Elizabeth, who started this journey with me. And I want to encourage the clerks that are in here to do it. We have one more that's coming up that has went through it with me, and so we have one more coming. So look forward to that. Thank you.
Just 30 more seconds. Right, just 30 more seconds. I need to run off to the door in a minute. There we go. Let's go this way.
And then one for a club. So sorry. There we go. All right, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E1, Continued Public Hearing. Consideration of An Ordnance Amending the Zoning Ordinance by Amending Ordinance Number of 0428-22-ZON to rezone approximately 10.207 acres located on northeast corner of Lady Tesla Avenue and Essex Boulevard, legally described as 10.207 acres out of the Amos Singleton Survey, abstract 1138, from Plan Development Multi-Family III District to Plan Development Townhouse II District to amend the Plan Development Concept Plan Set Forth and Except at 5B, the Realm Subdistrict Concept Plan thereto by amending the concept plan for 50.562 acres located in the north of Lady Tesla Avenue, legally described as 50.562 acres out of the Amos Singleton Survey, abstract 1138, and the Benjamin Schoonover Survey, abstract 1209, as requested by Patricia Adams. On behalf of Eric Stanley of Breco Lands CH LLC, the property owner, case number 24-04-2-PZ. The City Council opened the public hearing for this item on August 19, 2024, and continued the public hearing to the September 9, 2024 City Council Meeting to allow for a neighborhood meeting. The public hearing was continued again to the September 16, 2024 City Council Meeting to provide additional time to update the proposed concept plan to reflect the details discussed at the community neighborhood meeting. The public hearing was continued a third time to October 7, 2024, to determine if the additional setback could be provided. On October 7, 2024, the City Council continued the public hearing to the October 21, 2024 City Council Meeting to allow the applicant to incorporate increased building setback details into the concept plan. The Castle Hills Plan Development District Ordinance Number of 0428-22-ZON incorporates provisions of the Castle Hills Development Agreement, along with the variances to the agreement approved since 1996. The PD allows changes to base zoning districts and the subdistrict concept plans following the zoning processes in the Unified Development Code, UDC. The applicant is requesting to change the base zoning district on 10.207 acres from Plan Development Multi-Family III District to Plan Development Townhouse II District to allow for a front-entry townhome community where multifamily development had originally been planned. The proposed changes also necessitate an amendment to the approved concept plan. The concept plan for the Realm South Subdistrict is being amended in its entirety. However, the changes only impact 50.562 acres, which includes the 10.207 acres proposed for rezoning. The proposed concept plan amendment consists of the addition of the proposed townhomes, along with the reconfiguration of the remaining multifamily units. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously five to nothing on August 6, 2024. It's recommended that the City Council consider the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Richard Lukey, our Planning Director, available for questions, and the public hearing on this is now open. I do have one public combat, and I'm sorry, I think it's Daniel Young.
Thank you, sir. Tesla Avenue. So I am here tonight. I did see that there is a new proposal that has an extra 10 feet. I believe we stood at 50. They said they'd give an extra 10 feet. So I really appreciate the council, the help that they've given us, to all of us neighbors here on Lady Tesla to gain what we have from the developer. I also appreciate the developer offering the negotiations and everything to give up the land that they obviously own. So I wouldn't want to ask the council to kick this can down the road any further. I know everyone's been giving a little bit up. So I myself, I don't speak for everybody, but you know, I appreciate it, and I'm willing to accept everything that they're offering as long as I'm looking at the same proposal that everyone else is. So I haven't heard tonight what they are proposing. I've just seen some stuff online, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Mayor, can I say a few things? I just want to, I know we said this in the workshop room, but staff has been, although staff is in support of the proposal with amendments made on the concept plan, there are some notes that we're still working on with the developer that were put on those plans and trying to fine-tune those to make sure that we're adequately tying down what the obligations of both the city as well as the developer is in the future. We thought we would have a revision that clarified that by tonight. We don't. We have a few outstanding items that we need to work through, namely, we want to sit down with the developer, make sure they understand our long-range plans for sanitary sewer and water, and all the planning we've done over the last year for that area. So with that, staff is recommending, I know we said consider approval on this, we're actually now, because we still have some outstanding issues that we thought we'd get tied down, they're not tied down yet, we would like for the council to continue the public hearing until November 4. But obviously, that's the decision of the council, but that is our recommendation. Mr. Lukey, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
And I'd like to ask Richard to just confirm for the residents that are watching tonight, we are currently, what the developer is proposing is 60 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Any other comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to November 4.
Motion to continue the public hearing to November 4, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. All right. Item 2, Public Hearing. Consideration of An Ordnance Granting a Zone Change From Single Family Residential R-7.5 District to Old Town Mixed Use 1 District on Approximately .31 Acres Being a Portion of Lot 5 Block F, Original Town of Lewisville Edition, Located at 207 West Walters Street as Requested by Marlene and John Rogers, the property owners, 24-08-9-Z. The property owner wishes to rezone the property to bring it into compliance with the Old Town Master Plan's Recommended Zoning for the area. The property is currently a long-term rental with no immediate changes in use are planned. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval seven to nothing on September 17, 2024, and is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Richard Lukey, our Planning Director, is available for questions, and we now have an open public hearing on this item. If there are no public comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move, motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 0.31 acres of land, legally described as a portion of Lot 5 Block F, Original Town of Lewisville Edition, located at 207 West Walters Street, from Single Family Residential R-7.5 District zoning to Old Town Mixed Use 1 OTMU-1 District zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repeal or severability and a penalty and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Item passes six to nothing. Item F. Go ahead. That's fine, too.
Sorry, I just would like everybody to know that that is where it may come from.
There we go. A little bit of history. All right. Item F, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to the beginning of their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers make a personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, shells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. The City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken on a future meeting. We have no requests for Visitor Citizen Forum. So next up is the Consent Agenda. Item G, all the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I have no public speaker cards on this, but I do have a request by Councilmember Kelly to discuss item 5. So if I could get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, accepting item 5?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda, accept item 5.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, would please vote. Consent Agenda passes six to nothing. Item 5, Approval of a Resolution Adopting the City's Legislative Agenda for the 2025 Texas Legislature and Authorizing the Mayor and City Manager to Communicate the City's Adopted Legislative Plans. The 89th Texas Legislature convenes on January 14, 2024. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move, motion to approve the ordinance is set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 0.31 acres of land legally described as a portion of Lot 5 Block F Original Town of Lewisville Edition Located at 207 West Walters Street From Single Family Residential R-7.5 District Zoning To Old Town Mixed Use One OTMU-1 District Zoning Correcting the Official Zoning Map Preserving All Other Portions of the Zoning Ordinance Determining That the Zoning Amendment Herein Made Promotes the Health, Safety, and General Welfare of the City Providing for Repeal or Severability and a Penalty and an Effective Date and Declaring an Emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Item passes six to nothing. Item F. Go ahead. That's fine, too.
Sorry. I just would like everybody to know that that is where it may come from.
There we go. Little bit of history. All right. Item F, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers Must Address Their Comments to the Mayor Rather Than to Individual Council Members or Staff. Speakers Should Speak Clearly and State Their Name and Address Prior to the Beginning of their Remarks. Speakers Will Be Allowed Five Minutes for Testimony. Speakers Make Personal, Impertinent, Profane, or Slanderous Remarks May be Removed from the Meeting. Unauthorized Remarks From the Audience Stamping of Feet, Whistles, Yells, Clapping, and Similar Demonstrations Will Not Be Permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the City Council Is Restricted From Discussing or Taking Action on Items Not Listened on the Agenda. Action Can Only Be Taken on a Future Meeting. We have no requests for Visitor Citizen Forum, so next up is the Consent Agenda. Item G, All the Following Items on the Consent Agenda Are Considered to be Self-Explanatory by the Council and Will Be enacted with one motion. There Will Be No Separate Discussions of These Items Unless a Council Member or Citizen So Request. For Citizens to Request Removal of an Item, a Speaker Card or E-Comment Must Be Filled Out and Submit to the City Secretary. I have no public speaker cards on this, but I do have a request by Councilmember Kelly to discuss item five, so if I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda, accepting item five.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, accept item five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, would please vote. Consent Agenda passes six to nothing. Item five, Approval of a Resolution Adopting the City's Legislative Agenda for the 2025 Texas Legislature and Authorizing the Mayor and City Manager to Communicate the City's Adopted Legislative Plans. The 89th Texas Legislature Convenes on January 14th, 2025, and is expected to consider legislation on a wide range of issues with a direct impact on municipal government in general and on Lewisville in particular. As has been the practice since 2013, staff has prepared a legislative agenda based on city council input. Staff is asking city council to formally adopt the 2025 legislative agenda and authorize the mayor and city manager to communicate the agenda as needed. It's recommended that we approve the resolution and authorize the mayor and council and city manager to communicate the city's adopted legislative agenda as set forth in the caption above. Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. So, so two things. First off, the, the broad items that we talked about in council a couple, couple sessions ago, those all look fine to me. This is specifically regarding the memo that was attached that had 12 specific items in there. I just asked for consideration to change two of those items slightly. So the item that says, "Support Legislation to Protect the Right to Read Intellectual Freedom, Academic Freedom, First Amendment Rights of Texans in Schools, Public and Academic Libraries," feels broad to me. I would suggest that we change that to, "Support Legislation That Positively Impacts Libraries and Strengthens Texas Access to Information and Resources." That's my, my first, my first proposal, and I'll pause there for feedback.
Counsel, any questions, feedback, comments?
Can you repeat that?
Sure. So the first item was, the original wording was, "Support Legislation That Will Protect the Right to Read Intellectual Freedom, Academic Freedom, and First Amendment Rights of Texans in School, Public and Academic Libraries." My, my ask is to change that to be, "Support Legislation That Positively Impacts Libraries and Strengthens Texas Access to Information and Resources." Just trying to be a little more specific in that, in that language.
Anyone, anyone against or not, not feel like the, the, the replacement language would, would meet muster for you? Just trying to get some consensus on that.
We also have Carolyn here. Do you want to ask her any questions?
We have our Director of Library Services here, Carolyn Booker. Ms. Booker, would, do you have any input on that?
I would support that change.
Okay. Fair. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Well, hearing no other comments or questions on that, Councilmember Kelly, would you mind giving us the, the second one?
Sure. The second one is, is the last one on the list. Oppose Legislation That Would Make It More Difficult for Legal, Legally Eligible Texans to Register to Vote, That Would Make It More Difficult for Legally Registered Texans to Participate in the Constitutionally Protected Voting Process. So, so really, the same thing. I wanted to be a little more specific about that, one, and two, and flip that from oppose to support, to try to be a little more positive in that ask. So the proposed language that I would like to see is, "Support Legislation That Will Protect Current Public Access to Early Voting," I'm sorry, "to Early and Mail-in Voting, Maintain or Expand Voting Hours and Locations, and Allow Denton County to Establish a Countywide Voting Center."
Staff also doesn't have any problem with that change.
Okay. Counsel, any comments?
What was, what was the last part of that?
The last one was the countywide voting center, which our, our commissioners and judge have not chosen to implement at this time.
Can you take the voting centers out of it?
I can take the voting center out.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think that that, because that's not, I don't want to dabble in their, in their pond.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
So, Councilmember Kelly, can you walk that, that language through one more time with the edit?
I'll walk it through without that last part here. "Support Legislation That Would Protect Current Public Access to Early and Mail-in Voting, Maintain or Expand Voting Hours and Locations, and Allow Denton County," oh, and I'm going to stop there. Stop at the end.
Gotcha. At the end. Any questions or concerns about that replacement language?
I'm good with the last edit.
Okay. Councilmember Kelly, since you brought it all up, would you mind making a motion with the, with the changes as, as you've documented?
I'll do my best, Mayor. See, so, so Liz, do I read this as-is, but then say, "With the following exceptions or the following changes?" How do I do this best?
Except amendments.
I didn't hear that.
Changes to Exhibit A.
So read this and say, "With changes to Exhibit A." Okay. Let's see. "I move for the Approval of Resolution Adopting the City's Legislative Agenda for 2025 Texas Legislature, Legislature and Authorizing the Mayor and City Manager to Communicate the City's Adopted Legislative Priorities with the Following Changes to Exhibit A. Change Support Legislation That Will Protect the Right to Read Intellectual Freedom, Academic Freedom, and First Amendment Rights of Texans in School, Public and Academic Libraries. Two, Support Legislation That Positively Impacts Libraries and Strengthens Texans' Access to Information and Resources." And changing the wording, "New Oppose Legislation That Would Make It More Difficult for Legally Eligible Texans to Register to Vote, or That Would Make It More Difficult for Legally Registered Texans to Participate in the Constitutionally Protected Voting Process. Two, Support Legislation That Protect Current Public Access to Early Voting," I'm sorry. "Support Legislation That Would Protect Current Public Access to Early and Mail-in Voting, Maintain or Expand Voting Hours and Locations."
Second.
So I have a motion. I have a second. Councilmember Green? All right. All those in favor signify by clicking the little clicker. All right. I have six in favor, so motion passes. Thank you. Item H, Reports. Reports About Items of Community Interest Regarding Which No Action Will Be Taken. Councilmember Jones.
Okay. You will put me on the spot when I'm not prepared. No, no report, just, it was a lot going on this weekend with the For Love of Lewisville event. You'll notice that three of us were not there because we were competing in a big green egg competition that we had down, and we finished sixth among, how many?
About 20.
About 20 people, so, you know, for a first time, you know, we did pretty good, and there are a lot of compliments on the preserves that Councilman Kelly, Kelly made that were outstanding, and a great recipe of our bent, old-fashioned bourbon French toast bagels. So we had a good time representing our businesses here and had a lot of fun. It was a lot of work, but it was a lot of fun.
It's a good day.
I would like to give kudos to a young lady in Lewisville. Her name is Aria Daniels. And for her 12th birthday, that she decided, she decided that she was going to bring the bar higher on her two sisters. Both sisters on a birthday raised money for the North Texas Food Bank. The oldest one raised 2,500. The second one raised 5,000, and she doubled that. She raised a little over $10,000 on her 12, for her 12th birthday to give to the North Texas Food Bank, and that's what I see hope in our next generation coming up in this community.
Awesome. Thank you.
Bravo.
Several things here. First of all, I want to thank Richard for inviting me to APA this past week, and low behold, my first time, and Richard gets the Planning Icon Award. Also, on their team, Michelle Berry, she had a couple presentations, got to go to one of those, so congrats to you all for that. Was at the For Love of Lewisville event this weekend, great event that we had, probably the most people I've seen, probably so far. Kudos to the Neighborhood Services Team. I saw people bringing their own vehicles, hauling things, hauling trash in their vehicles. That takes a lot. I'm not sure I'd do that in my truck, but they, great, great team spirit. I think we probably hit the most different sites, I think, this year from what I can tell, and the family for Fox Henry was greatly appreciative of everything that happened there, so we need to keep building on that event. That was great. Couple library activities, Fall Festival for Families with Children of All Ages, Thursday, October 24th, 6 to 7 p.m., Bennett Children's Wing. No ticker or registration required. Murder at the Masquerade After Hours Murder Mystery Event for Adults Only, Friday, October 25th, 6 to 9:30, Bennett Program Room, registration is required. And that's all I've got.
Great. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troy?
Yes, Mayor. I have a number of items for the Lewisville Grand Theater during the coming weeks. First of all, Le Ballet de Dracula, presented by Lake City's Ballet. That will be October 25th and 26th, with two performances on the 26th. Raised in a Barn, How Music Headed Me Healed Me, plus Open Mic Karaoke Night, presented by Our Productions Theater Company on October 26th. Then The Little Mermaid, presented by Christie New Theater of DFW, November 1st through the 3rd, and 8th through the 10th, with two performances on November 2nd and November 9th. And as always, the acoustic jam sessions go on every Friday evening from 6 to 9, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. And there are a number of exhibitions going on right now. Conexiones Culturali, Cultural Connections, an art exhibition celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, presented by the City of Lewisville, created by artist Jose Angel Hernandez, through, through November 16th. It Moves Me, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through October 26th, an art exhibition presented by the Cross Timbers Artist Guild through November 2nd, and finally Pivot, presented by second-year MFA students at UNT, October 25th through November 30th.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
No, sir. No report.
No report, Mayor.
No plaque, no, like, sash or anything? I mean, come on.
The plaque is still in my truck.
Congrat, congratulations, Richard. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council Park fans, just a couple of reports to give you. We are in the process of installing the new kiosk and gates at Leela and at Lake Park Tower Bay. They will be rolling online Tuesday, Wednesday, and probably Thursday. We've sent an email out and notified all card members, so they should be aware. We'll be doing some social media rollout as well, so anybody, they'll need to have a new key fob, but they'll be given an entry code in the meantime for them to, to get in for their specific account. So we're looking forward to those coming online, excited about it. If you haven't seen them, they're a lot bigger than the previous kiosk, and they have some branding on them, so they're, they're pretty cool. The other thing is, the west side of Kia Drive is ours now, and we will be closing the driveway, the private driveway, to through traffic starting Monday. So we expect there'll be some hiccups along the line, but just know that that is moving forward, and we're start, we're about at 90% design for what that area of the park will become.
Great. Thank you.
Lake Report. We are at 88, 88.5% full, 519.54 feet.
It's been a long time without rain.
It has been.
And this, we're not getting any in October. This is the first October we haven't had rain in several decades, is what I understand, so. All right. Jim?
Excuse me. Today, we had a visit at the, the Public Safety Center facility, and we did a punch walk for the support building. That's the building that's underneath the garage, and there's lots of blue tape all over the place, but generally, it went really, really well. Everything's looking good, and it's just another milestone in the project, so I just want to let you guys know that it's still moving forward, still working hard, looked really good.
Yeah, I noticed, I noticed a whole bunch of civic circle opened up here over the weekend, so that's, that's been exciting to see as well.
Yeah, and that's moving well, pretty well, too, so. David's project, you can tell you about that, but I got a report on that earlier today that, that, that's going well, too, that making some good progress, getting ready to do some more paving very shortly.
Super. Thank you. Chief? Chief? City Manager?
Can, can I go?
No. No, I, I chopped the two of you off.
Krista, would you like to go, too? I'd like to. He does, okay. Nope. All right. So, so Mayor, just a couple things. One, the, yeah, the, the Egg Fest was a lot of fun, and we, I think we did some really good Champion of Lewisville businesses. I know we ran into people who were from Lewisville, even from the, from the downtown area, but didn't really take advantage of what we had to offer downtown, so I think we, we did some, some good work there. And then also, there, oh, there is a Champion Macedonia Cemetery Cleanup this weekend, if you have an opportunity to come out. This is not really a kid-friendly cleanup. Usually, they're more than welcome, but there'd be a lot of chainsaws and pole saws out there, so we're asking for adults that have chainsaws and pole saws to come out and help us with that cleanup. Lots of chair removal, brush removal, things like that. That's everything, Mayor.
Thank you.
I was just going to briefly mention that we also have the, the Monsters on Main coming up this Saturday, starting at 6, I believe, and that should be a lot of fun. And you don't necessarily have to have kids to come out and enjoy it. There, we've got a lot of great restaurants just to be part of the community, and I'm sure there's going to be so many adorable little costumes, so come out.
Awesome. Thank you. City Manager?
I was going to say Little Monsters on Main, but I wanted to thank Chris McGinn and his whole team. This was a very moving weekend, working on the cemetery, good team building, but you guys executed with excellence. Well-oiled machines. I wish all of you had, could have seen how well the line ran. I mean, those are the little operational things I geek out about, but it was well done.
Awesome. Awesome.
Kudos.
So a couple of quick things I'm going to add. Early voting started today, 7 to 7. Just get it done. There's nothing that's going to happen in the next 15 days that's going to change anybody's mind. Go out and vote. Let's make it happen. That way, you don't have to wait on November 5th in a, in a really big line. So that's number one. Number two, I want to thank Cloud Nine Charities and Kim Cloud for the North Texas Tribute Jam this past weekend. They did a wonderful job. We got a great email saying that they were really excited about all the, the help that staff gave, and really appreciated everything that we did to, to make this a success. I know it was, it's been a pivot from the Brew Fest over the last several years, and I think it's really exciting to have all those folks coming out and, and doing the tribute jams. So with that, we, we do have closed session, is that right?
Yeah.
So, gotcha. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Pending Litigation, Leo Rodriguez versus Zoning Board of Adjustment of the City of Lewisville, Case Number CV-2024-03104, County Court of Law, Number 2, Denton County, Texas, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, we are going to move into closed Counsel, as there's no further action to be taken tonight, on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned at 8:06 p.m.